I do want to acknowledge Mr. Garcia that today is, April 2nd is National Autism Day, and I do want to acknowledge that before those present here before us today. I know that some of us have employees or family members that have either a loved one with autism or a special need, and so I just want them to know that we deeply adore them and that we also are supportive of them and the mission of autism. So, thank you very much. 1.6, Approval of Minutes of Regular Meeting, March 18th, 2024. I have a motion by Commissioner Lotzokarmona. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Uranda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. We have 2.1, Informational, The Purchase of Two Dodge Durangos and Equipment Using the Fargo Funds from Operation Stone Garden FY21, 3045006, Dimmitt County Sheriff's Office. These are informational items, Commissioners' Court. It is coming out through the Operation Stone Garden Grant. We put it on there as informational, as a procedure for the Auditor's Office. There is no approval needed since it is coming out from the grant. 2.2 is to purchase the McGruff, the Crime Dog's animated costume, used, using the sheriff's forfeiture account. Again, it is an informational item. The purchase of this costume is coming out of the Chapter 59 forfeiture and seizure account. 3.1, Approval of Bonds. We have no bonds. 3.2, Discussion and Appropriate Action, Potholes, Business, Entrance/Exit, Catarina Food Mart.
Judge.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I get my phone up?
Yes, you can, Judge. Okay.
I'm in with the individual from the store. He wanted to see if we could help him out on this pothole at this entrance. It's a huge pothole, but the trucks are going through there, since it's a narrow road and they can't turn because of this. We were gonna take this out, because I know Gary had already taken out the water, the fire hydrant was removed from there, but we left it like that because of the telephone call. If we take it out, the trucks are gonna damage it, and there will be no air in any catarinas. So we left it as is. So he wanted to see if we can assist him with those, the pothole on this side. It's a huge pothole, maybe like eight feet wide, and it, our trash trucks go through there, so it's hard for our trash trucks to do the turn through there. So I said, well, let me put it through Commissioners' Court and see. I'm not sure if we're allowed to or not, or how we can assist.
Any questions? Mr. Gonzalez, are we allowed to assist it on private property recognition?
Half of it is on our property and half of it is the count, the stores. There's two, two potholes. One is in our area, but closer to his property. Our trash trucks go through there also.
Yeah, but that's sent to like the other county roads or other roads where we pick up trash that are not planning roads. My trash trucks go through there, but we don't repair them because they're private roads. They're private, we shouldn't, now, this gentleman's willing to take the materials and have the guy do the work. I consider that. Because, you know, that, what keeps any of the businesses, I'll say, we have a pothole in our park and not come repairing?
He said he can get the material from Angel Brothers. If he's, if he gets the material, can we go? It won't even take five minutes just to spread it out.
Yeah, if the park is on a kind of road anyways, and all it's gonna do is, is if our kind of road allows our kind of trash trucks to go and we're just spreading the road, I don't see a problem with that, especially if they're donating the materials to the campus. But, yeah, we'd be careful about other parks, but just saying, you have them.
Ma'am, also, if it's like, Commissioner, if any part of it's on, on the kind of road, if it's not addressed, it's gonna continue to damage the park.
Right, right, and that's why if they purchase the materials and you wouldn't even go, like, reverse it, some of the materials that's white, and we take our kind of road the same time.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Commissioner Drogukawa, do you want us to amend the motion to allow the potholes to be fixed contingent on the fact that, what is the person saying again? Mr.?
Ali.
Ali? If Mr. Ali provides the material to cover that pothole.
And deliver them to the site, you know, we don't want to go and clean up the material.
Would that be your motion, Commissioner? I have a motion, Mr. Garcia, by Commissioner Drogukawa.
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Uranda. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
I'm gonna abstain, I was gonna hear.
We have one abstention, Commissioner Juan Carmona. 3.3, Discussion and Appropriate Action, Approval of the Resolution of the Texas Community Development Block Grant, Application to the Texas Department of Agriculture for the Colonia Fund. Commissioners, this is the typical CDVG grant resolution that I must sign in order for us to continue moving forward with that CDVG grant. We do have representatives here from Midoriel Grant, who are our administrator, uh, grant administrators for this particular grant. If you have any questions, nonetheless, this is just the approval of the resolution. Do we have any questions? Motion by Commissioner Drogukawa, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Uranda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, ladies. 3.4, Discussion and Appropriate Action, Approval of Interlocal Agreement between Dimmitt County and the Regional Public Defenders for FY24-25. This interlocal agreement, Commissioners, is the agreement that has been in place for the previous years prior to my administration, essentially that in order for us to provide counsel to defendants who don't or cannot afford attorneys, and we have court either through county court or through district court with Judge Flores and Judge Pascal. We have the Regional Public Defender's Office for those capital cases, which is like the capital murder cases, and this is what this MOU is for.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Lotzokarmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Uranda, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.5, Discussion and Appropriate Action, Monthly Report from County Extension Agent, Ms. Alyssa Cruz for the month of February and March 2024.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioner.
Good morning.
I'm gonna go ahead and hand out a couple upcoming programs that I have going on. The first one that you see on there is a multi-county water well screening, which we do host every spring and fall. Anyone's welcome to participate in that. We also have an educational portion on the 18th for that. It will be a virtual workshop hosted by one of the agriculture extension specialists. And then the one behind that is the Agriculture Symposium, which will be held April 30th there at the Conference Center. And the next one is the Soil Presentation Program. That one's on virtual as well. It's a workshop that we did, we hosted a soil campaign at the end of last year, so we're following up with an educational portion to that.
Any questions of Ms. Cruz on her reports for February and March? I have a motion by Commissioner Drogukawa. I have a second by Commissioner Uranda. Any further discussion? The water well screening, that's for the public, correct? If there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Cruz. 3.6, I have table, um, table that item, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Drogukawa. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.7, Discussion and Appropriate Action, Approval for County Extension Agent, Ms. Alyssa Cruz and FCH Agent, Ms. Kari Samonius, to attend the District 124H Roundup on April the 6th in Falforias. I have a motion by Commissioner Drogukawa.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Uranda. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Cruz. 3.8, Discussion and Appropriate Action, Monthly Report from Rodeo Arena Event Coordinator, Ms. Jasmine Donhan for the month of March 2024.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioner.
Do we have any questions? Motion by Commissioner Uranda, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Drogukawa. Discussion?
Yes, Judge, I'm sorry. The, when you, when they send the contract, do you let them know the hours, correct, of what time they're supposed to be using?
Yes.
Because there's some confusion, and they keep calling me, what are the hours? Well, that young lady's, uh, she's got the contract, as you said, the contract, correct?
Yes, I have the contract here, and I talked to Mr. Harvey once, and he told me that they're only allowed four hours max. But on the contract, it says, uh, they're not, since they rent the whole $200 worth, the hundred deposit to rent, they have it from 9:00 in the morning to 10:00 p.m.
Okay, but if I rent it for four hours, they're aware that that's the four hours you're gonna use, correct?
Who rented for four hours?
Some lady in Bigwells, and then she wanted it since Friday, to go and decorate since Friday, and I, I said, no, because the kids play on Friday. And she wanted it from Friday to 10 o'clock Saturday, so I told her, no. Because it says, if you rent it for four hours, it's the four hours you're gonna use. Now, we can open it for them to decorate on Saturday, but not on Friday.
But I don't understand that, four hours.
Right, just four hours, correct?
But no, there, there is no four-hour timeframe. The contract specifically says they can rent it from, what is it, 8:00 a.m. or what is it?
9:00 a.m. to 10:00.
9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Right, but not, not, not before that, correct?
Like the day Friday.
Like, for example, uh, I wanna rent it on Monday, okay, so I want Sunday to go over there and decorate it and all my stuff.
Yeah, so with that one, I, I thought it was the same with Asherton and Bigwells, because Asherton and Bigwells, the contract is completely the same, the only thing that's different is the title.
Right.
But, um, like with Commissioner Valerie, she lets me, she lets me, well, not me, but the public, if they rent it on a Saturday, she'll, she'll tell me, tell them on Friday to come pick up the key, and after the kids are done playing, they can decorate, after 9:00, when the kids are done. But I don't know if that's the same with Bigwells, or, I can't do that.
So I guess, for Jasmine, I guess what you're talking about is that she went by the way that Commissioner Drogukawa allows her to do, and that's the same information that she gave this young lady, whoever's the lady you're saying is calling you, and that's what she did. And so she's saying, if your policy is different, she has to follow the policy of the contract for the day of, so there is no four-hour timeframe. It is from, if they rent it and they pay the full fee, it's from the 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. That's what they're allowed to ask her of the contract.
Understand, but not before, correct?
Well, I mean, technically, the contract doesn't allow, it doesn't say that, but out of a courtesy, I suppose, I can't speak for Commissioner Drogukawa, but I suppose you do it out of courtesy.
Yeah, I've been doing it since we rented out the Red Center. If we're not using it on Saturday, Friday, we close at 9:00, the lady cleans, and she's there by 10:00, and they wanna come decorate, I allow them to come decorate or bring in whatever they need to bring in, if it's cleaned by that time. If not, they have to wait until morning and I'm too mad.
That's understandable, yeah, because the kids play first, so after 10:00, if they wanna come and clean, it's up to them. I mean, to decorate, it's up to them, but during that time, the gym was built for the kids, and, and since, I've been here, uh, as kids are first, that, uh, that wants to play basketball and all that. So, to me, no matter, but I just wanna be on the same page as what we're gonna do.
No, yeah, I understand, I, I just went by what the Commissioner Valerie was telling me for Asherton, and I implied the same was for Bigwells. And then, like, the four rule thing, um, so do you want me to go by the, do you want me to change the contract to put it?
No, I didn't tell you what.
No, we have to go by the contract.
So I don't understand the four hours.
Ma'am?
Go ahead.
So, these contracts are put in place for consistency purposes, to try to be consistent across with the venues that the county provides. The, what Commissioner Drogukawa does is, just out of courtesy, like you just stated, no one's using it where they're done, she allows people to go in there and kind of get ahead, uh, ahead of what they're trying to do, you know, just to, to help the people out. We just have to stay consistent more than anything, so to, to avoid the confusion amongst the people using the venue. If, if it's possible, we do the same thing at the arena, if it's allowed, we use that term, if it's allowed, well, allow people to go in there to start decorating, you know, for their event. Now, if somebody else is using it or, or it's, uh, if it's reserved for some other reason, obviously we can't, because we have to follow the contract, but if it's allowable, well, let somebody go in there an hour earlier, whatever it is, whatever we can assist with, just to make it easier to the public. But it, it's important that we stay consistent, too. I really think it, it creates confusion, you know, because people, people like, people communicate, and they'll say, well, how come over here they let me in, over here they didn't let? We wanna avoid that, if possible. We'll go with the contract.
Okay. I have the Bigwells and the Asherton, okay. Do you have extra copies?
Because I don't wanna put her on a bind, but like, in Bigwells, there's no alcohol, and in Jettos, there's alcohol, so.
But, but the contract allows for alcohol.
It allows in Bigwells?
Yes, sir, it does. I read it. It allows, as long as they get security guards, they're allowed to have alcohol.
The Bigwells, the Bigwells.
When they will approve that, ever since then, ever since I, I've been.
That contract has been approved since?
All you need is a piece of this, or?
Yes.
So I would like to bring that one back, see if I can get the votes not to drink there, because it's maybe for the kids, it's not for, for?
Well, I think if, if we, I mean, you can bring it back, I, I mean, whoever wants to vote, however they wanna vote, but I think we're going back to being inconsistent, because if we're allowing alcohol in Asherton, or we're allowing alcohol at the rodeo arena, or we're allowing alcohol at the Joaquín Salgado, or we're allowing alcohol at the Placita, and we're not gonna do it in Bigwells, I think we're being inconsistent and we're being prejudicial to, uh, Bigwells. Because the contract specifically says that there can be alcohol so long as there is a security guard provided by the individuals renting out the facility.
Look, my concern is that people get intoxicated, even though there's officers there, and they're gonna get into a fight, they're gonna break a glass, and, and before we know it, somebody's gonna get hurt, and I just wanna avoid the liability for the county for them. But anyway.
And when they rent this, uh, when they rep, when they rent the recreational centers, do they give you the name of the option that's gonna be as a guard? Is he a certified police officer or law enforcement?
Under contract.
Or, or is it just a regular licensed security guard, which, uh, that just does standard, uh, security?
No, it has to be a peace officer, or it has two certified peace officers or one certified security guard.
Okay, how do you determine if there's two needed?
Depends on how many people, like, at the Asherton or the?
I'm, I'm just, I just wanna, like, what does the recreational centers require, and what does the rodeo, rodeo?
The rodeo requires two, and Asherton and Bigwells require one.
Due to the space?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, because I got off, and I need to take, uh, as, as you were mentioning, Judge, that, uh, the Salgado allows it, but we're not allowing it at Alanice also, so we're gonna remove that, am I?
Alanice is not a recreational center for?
It's a park. Uh, the, uh, what we call, uh, Salado is a park.
You're absolutely correct. I'm going by what the contract says, Commissioner, Commissioner Carmona, if you guys want to change the policy for the Alanice and allow alcohol, then bring it back to Commissioners' Court, and it'll, we'll vote to see, but as of today.
The reason I was saying, ma'am, with all due respect, is that you were saying we were prejudiced against Bigwells, or not allowing alcohol over there.
Because you're saying, because you're saying, because you're saying that you wanna bring it back before Commissioners' Court to vote for Bigwells not to have alcohol, and what I'm telling you is that all the contracts, and I've read all the contracts, all the contracts for every park except the Alanice Sports Baseball Complex does not allow for alcohol. But all the other, uh, uh, recreational centers, if you will, or all the other parks allow for alcohol as per the contracts. The Alanice Sports Complex does not allow for alcohol. And these were contracts that were made before my administration came, we just rolled them over to now, and so they've stayed the same, they've never changed. And so what I'm telling you is, because you're saying that you don't want alcohol in Bigwells.
No, no, it's not that I don't want it, it's, I don't know, like I said, like, like you're telling me that it was changed somehow, but I don't remember it ever coming, because since we built it, I think, I have always said no alcohol at, at, at Bigwells and the science structure, so that's why, that's why I was asking that when it was 20, we changed it.
I, I.
Because ever since we built it, it's been no alcohol, and everybody here knows that, that I've always thought for no alcohol in, in the park, at the, at the gym.
I think back then, it was just yours.
Right.
That I remember, because I remember that you, you had a, a vote it not to rent it out, and we said, Asherton doesn't have any buildings to use, so we, I decided, as Commissioners' Court, we voted, that we would rent our Red Center for parties, but first keep the kids, the kids would play first, and if it was available on the weekend, then it would be rented out, and we said, we'll take it here, but we have to pass the security. So maybe that's why, you're saying, you were sitting in the lobby, because I remember first we weren't gonna rent it, and then, early last year, you started renting it out.
Yes, Commissioner.
Judge, this brings another question, and I just thought about it right now. The security officers that they hire, do we carry their lessons?
They, no.
In case something happens there at the?
No, they, they are, um, the liability is on that agency, whoever the, the.
But if they're certified, so, uh, I don't know, I'm just thinking, I'm not thinking it's a lawyer, but my question, but the, who, say, there's a fight that broke out, right, and, and that, that deputy has tried to stop it, somebody breaks his arm and deputy has, or, or the security guard, let me rephrase that. If they file charges against the security officer, so who's gonna cover them? Do they have a liability to risk?
They, they have to, they have to be bonded, whoever, that's.
Or they get, uh?
No, we don't, Commissioner, they don't carry, are bonded. That contract specifically states that the individual who's renting out the facility has to hire their own law enforcement agency or security guard agency to do the security guard there at the arena for that event. If something happens, the liability is on the individuals who, they're, they're not working for the county of Dimmitt, that's why they signed that contract, they're, they're, we are not liable.
Does it apply that?
Yes, they, and they, they're required to give me the receipt or deposit of that security.
Judge, uh, can I make the move?
Go ahead.
Uh, in going back to this alcohol and non-alcohol situation, one of the things that I strongly feel about is, we all know that most of the time, or, I say most of the time, even, uh, parties that people get together, and it's happened at Alanice, still, what it says, they know we're not supposed to have alcohol, and people still figure out a way to bring in alcohol. I mean, that's a given. The only thing about this, the way it's rented right now, if we were to have changed it and say no alcohol, but knowing that they're still gonna bring in alcohol, there's really no way of catching anybody, unless you have them with a can in their hand. They use cups, things, or a country to drink alcohol. So, in essence, still gonna have alcohol, but no security. The way it's written right now, they're required to have a security, and I think we're just a step ahead by at least having a security and having control of the situation, knowing that there's, we, we know that there's gonna be alcohol, so the security should, the security that people should be responsible enough to have control of the situation, and knowing that things happen, it's just one way of protecting, so I request you to security if there is alcohol. That's just my thought on that.
Any other questions?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner, actually, I have a motion already, Commissioner, by Commissioner Uranda, and I have a second by Commissioner Valerie Drogukawa. There was discussion, any other discussion?
Judge, on the Bowman Field, Mr. Cruz is remodeling the restrooms. So I had, uh, looking to Ms. Jasmine, because I know that the restrooms are not, uh?
They can't utilize, they're not in working condition.
He should be done hopefully soon, because he's done, they can use, I mean, they can use it, but there's no restrooms for the kids to use.
Do you need order downs up there, Judge?
If, I don't know if we're gonna start practicing probably till next month, no?
The second week in April.
The second week of April.
If you happen to need it, they're willing.
Okay, yeah, because he's redoing all the whole restrooms. We already did the concession stand, so that would be good.
Any other discussion?
Judge, I'm gonna bring it back for next Commissioners' Court, Judge, on the hours for the rental on the basketball teams and volleyball. I know we have basketball teams that go and practice for an hour, and the volleyball team was three hours. I don't know why it was three hours, I was under the impression it was an hour and a half. An hour to play volleyball in 30 minutes, which is 15 to set up and 15 to take off. Uh, I know there was a lot of coaches asking why it was, sort of, once, we, not rent it, because we don't rent it, we let them use it. For them, she's a good three hours, but everybody else was an hour. So my thing is, I think an hour and a half would be good, which is 15 to set up, 15 to take off, and an hour for, like, everybody else gets an hour, but the only difference with, the volleyball would be 30 minutes extra, because it's to set up and take off. And I'm gonna see if I can get with the city of Asherton, to see if we provide maybe a volleyball net, and they can use the pavilion outside, because it's not being used during the week. If they like, more than two hours, they can use the pavilion outside. I'm gonna skip to the mirror.
That would be a good idea.
If we can purchase it, and they can use it, because that way the kids play basketball inside and they can play volleyball.
That would be a good idea. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you. 3.9, Discussion and Appropriate Action, Monthly Report from Constable Precinct 2, Mr. Andres Aramola for Orlando Rubio, Joey Rivera, for the month of March 2024.
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning, Judge.
Permission to approach, Judge?
Constable, the 750 and 780, those are your deputies, correct?
Those are the, yes.
I have a motion by Commissioner Lotzokarmona.
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Drogukawa. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Constable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
3.10, you can come back, Commissioner, just, I mean, Constable. Discussion and Appropriate Action. Approval for Constable Andres Arambula to attend the continuing education for Constables' class on July 15th through the 19th in Huntsville. Motion by Commissioner Dubocava. Second by Commissioner...
Sir.
I got you, Commissioner.
Sorry.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Any other discussion?
I have a question. Uh, you just put your meals or, or your...
No, he put his meals, he just didn't put for a hotel.
A hotel.
Or a travel, because he's, you're gonna use the vehicle, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And you're not gonna need a hotel.
No, your bags are not...
I have my bags.
I saw it, I saw it around, but it's not...
Hello?
If you can speak into the mic so he can hear you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Constable.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.11, Discussion and Appropriate Action. Monthly Report from Constable Precinct Three, Mr. Robert Valderas, Rudy Lopez, Julio Fuentes, and Moventino Torres for the month of March 2024.
Morning, Judge.
Morning, Commissioner.
Morning.
Morning.
Questions?
Oh, sorry.
It's okay. Questions? Do I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona?
Second.
Who's second?
Rudy.
Second by Commissioner Odena. Discussion.
Thank you for enforcing the permit.
Yes, sir.
I think you kind of controlled it so that, so...
Yes.
Commissioner Arambula, thank you for enforcing the permit.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Constable.
Thank you.
3.13, Discussion and Appropriate Action. Monthly Report from Constable Precinct Four, Mr. Jose Garabon for the month of March 2024.
Morning, Judge.
Morning.
Morning.
Any questions for Constable Castañeda? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Odena, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dubocava. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Constable.
Thank you.
3.13, Discussion and Appropriate Action. Monthly Report from Constable Precinct Four, Mr. Jose Garabon for the month of March 2024.
Morning, Judge.
I'll be sure.
Morning.
Any questions? I have a motion by Commissioner Carmona, Alonso Carmona.
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Dubocava. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Constable.
Thank you.
3.14, Discussion and Appropriate Action. Monthly Report from Constable Precinct Four, Mr. Jose Garabon for the month of March 2024.
Morning, Judge.
Morning.
Morning, Mr. Ortiz.
Any questions for Constable Castañeda? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Odena, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dubocava. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries.
Thank you.
3.12, Discussion and Appropriate Action. Monthly Report from Constable Precinct One, Mr. Alfred Castañeda for the month of 2024.
Morning.
Morning.
Any questions for Constable Castañeda?
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Odena, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dubocava. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Constable.
Thank you.
3.13, Discussion and Appropriate Action. Monthly Report from Constable Precinct Four, Mr. Jose Garabon for the month of March 2024.
Morning, Judge.
Morning.
Morning, Mr. Ortiz.
I brought this, uh, through Commissioners' Court on request by some employees because, um, as it stands right now, in order to get paid for the COVID hours the county has approved, you have to have either an official test by a county, Dimmitt County tester, or through the doctor's office. Although now, since the county's not doing testing anymore, and also we've had some reports that, that, uh, employees will call the doctor's office and say, I took an at-home test, um, can I go and get an official test? And they're like, no, uh, just stay home for X amount of days, and then you can go back to work. So due to the reluctance of some doctor's offices not wanting to give us the official tests, um, we wanted to see if you wanted to leave the policy as is, or if you want to start accepting the at-home test as backup.
No.
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 3.14, Discussion and Appropriate Action.
Monthly Report from Victory Ambulance for the month of March 2024. You have anybody from Victory?
Okay.
I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dubocava. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.15, Discussion and Appropriate Action. Monthly Report from Dimmitt County Golf Course for the month of March 2024.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Questions?
There are no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
No.
Motion by Commissioner Dubocava.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odena. Further discussion?
Judge, uh, I have a question. I was just asking the Commissioner about, I thought we, we didn't handle cash. It was all cards or any, or just cash on the reports or...
You received cash, Ms. Hyman, yes?
Cash credit partnerships.
What was it gonna be? Cards and...
No.
Did you say one time that it was gonna be just cards and, so...
And then nobody should receive cash?
That's what I, yes.
That's why we all didn't get credit card?
No, this guy's probably easier for people who wanted to use a credit card. From day, from the, from day one, we said, we never said no cash, but JP said they wanted cash. But there is no policy in the county.
Do you recall Commissioner Dubocava when that is, and we can go back and look at the minutes?
That'll be a while.
Years. Because I can, I, I can...
It'd be three when we first got it. Because I remember I even asked one time that where were they taking cash? And they said they were taking cash because the system was down or they were having issues with the internet. So that was, that's why they were gonna take cash, but once it was taken care of, it was gonna go back to credit card.
And, and, and are they bonded?
Nobody.
Yes, she's bonded. She's bonded. I, I can tell you...
Are they willing to take cash?
No. All, we, we, all our employees there, uh, signed the form and turned it into the bond.
So under one bond, everybody can have all the employees?
All the employees.
That's what I mean.
Yes.
They're all bonded.
Okay.
All their employees are bonded. Commissioner, um, I, I know you're saying it goes years back, but I, I can just speak for myself from the last year or so that I've been here. Mr. Pereda has advised us that we can accept cash.
There's no policy that you'll approve or no cash anywhere.
The case came from you saying that we were gonna go to cards because we didn't want cash being handled.
No, no, no.
And, and some, and that happened because also the treasurer's office, I, they handled cash, but that, that was one of the questions they had because people didn't have cards and it was allowable with a tax office.
Because people wanted to use a credit card, their ATM cards or whatever, that's why we got the credit card. And they, they do use it in all the offices.
Well, there's a lot of plan, tell if we go to cards only. We do have a lot of high school students that come in from, uh, Crystal City in Carrizo, and they don't have a credit card. They didn't carry cash.
No, the, the thing was, first of all, just, if we accepted cash, I wouldn't say that you're doing wrong or anything like that. The question is, I might have forgotten or Helen would have corrected about the cash, but I remember one side, he did say that we were gonna go to credit cards. And there was a minimal, uh, policies that we're gonna handle cash. And this was several years ago.
Maybe this is one? No.
No, because that, that other man had it back then. It could be this, this one.
But we, that's why we got the credit card machines. Commissioner, this is going back to what the judge said, that we're never going the same thing all the time. We're always changing stuff. And, and this is the reason we always come out with this thing, because as far as I remember, we were told nobody should have cash back in the day. That's way before their time. But if you wanna change it, by all means.
Well, I think it's been changed.
Because, that's the thing, what the judge said, we're, we're never, we're never in agreement, everything is changed. I will go back through the minutes and find out, but I certainly doubt there was ever any... I was here when you told us specifically that nobody should be having cash in their department, right? So that means I can, if, if they wanna pay a fine over there, cash, they can pay it with... The main piece, I think, they didn't want cash. You said, you said, at the last time, you said everybody should pay by cash, check, or money order. That's the policy on the JP's, I believe. Right. So, where's the cash? So they can have cash come in? You said, no, the last time... For them, it's better not to have cash? Oh, no, no, that's not what you said, you said no cash. I don't think I made a requirement, but they said they...
I think it was a policy within themselves.
So they, they can have cash if they come back and they want to accept cash. Not anymore they can. Not anymore they can because they don't accept it. I know you said no petty cash. Right, there is no petty cash anywhere. See, that, that, that's the reason people say I'm a lot mouth, because we never come into an agreement, never. Because you, you say one thing, then the following week it might be another.
Or perhaps it's, it's a misunderstanding in terms of, because now you're saying that no petty cash, and perhaps Commissioner Juan interpreted that as no cash period.
There is no petty cash. Oh, I was going to get counted. You don't want to have it.
Petty cash and cash is two different things.
Remember, remember that time where you even suggested that when they, when Commissioner Odena first took over the golf course, that you said it would be better just to have credit cards, that way there will be no problem with the cash? Remember that? It would be better, it doesn't mean that... But no, no, but to us it means no cash. But to her it means no cash. I don't know what the other commissioners think, pero, when, when we were into that problem, you said, nobody, that's why the credit cards are gonna put on, be put on all the machines. That's what you told us, correct? Well, it's... Correct. You find them to the tax office. No, 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 I'm talking about the golf course, didn't you say that? All the machines are gonna have a credit card, so they can just wipe it, correct? Which we do, which we did, because it makes it easier to handle, right? We prefer a credit card. Honestly, we would much rather do credit card. The only problem is...
You'll lose clientele.
...because if somebody wants to go in there and buy a coke, and they're getting charged. All I'm trying to clarify is, you told us no cash, so that's all I'm trying to clarify. Do we take it, do they take cash or not? Okay. Yes, they can. Okay, I'll make it. You're not gonna go in there, buy a coke for a dollar, and get charged whatever they can pay for it.
A dollar ninety-five.
A dollar ninety-five.
Yes, or a charge.
For one dollar. And that's why they're allowed, they're allowed to keep cash, to take cash. All I'm asking is, are they gonna be able to take cash wherever they is? They have to. Now, as far as everything else, there's a difference in the memberships and what have you, because everybody charges it, or they pay by check. And a lot of people pay by check because they don't wanna pay the service charge, because they don't charge a service charge on checks. That's fine. All I wanna know is, is they gonna be able to take cash, and that's it? Yes. Okay. There never was an option, because they're buying, uh, sodas or whatever the chips, there's a service charge if you go to the credit card. Well, it's not our fault. If there's a server charge, we didn't put it under? The credit card company did, we didn't? I understand that, but... Well, you go, you go, you go to the hospital, you buy a coke, they're gonna put you a service, service charge. If you go somewhere else, even the restaurants, they put you a service charge. It's not our fault that there's a server charge. No, they don't service, they don't, the credit card does not give you a service charge on the, on your card.
They charge the owner.
They charge the owner.
Right, Mr. Ortiz?
Well, yes.
You eat up the service charge.
We prefer a credit card. Honestly, we would much rather do a credit card. The only problem is.
You'll lose clientele.
So if somebody wants to go in there and buy a Coke. All I'm trying to clarify is you told us no cash. So that's all I'm trying to clarify. Do we take it? Do they take cash or not?
Okay, yes, they can. Okay, I'll make it. You're not going to go in there, buy a Coke for a dollar and get charged whatever they.
A dollar ninety-five.
A dollar ninety-five for one dollar. And that's why they're allowed to keep cash, to take cash.
All I'm asking is are they going to be able to take cash wherever they ask?
They have to. Now, as far as everything else, there's a difference in the memberships and what have you. Because everybody charges it or they pay by check. And a lot of people pay by check because they don't want to pay the service charge. Because they don't charge a service charge on checks.
That's fine. All I want to know is if they're going to be able to take cash. Is that it?
Yes.
Okay.
There never was an option because they're buying sodas or whatever the chips. There's a service charge if you go the credit card.
Well, it's not our fault. If there's a server charge, we didn't put it under. The credit card company did. We didn't.
I understand that, but.
Well, you go to the hospital, you buy a Coke, they're going to put you a service charge. If you go somewhere else, even the restaurants, they put you a service charge. It's not our fault that there's a server charge.
No, they don't service. They don't. The credit card does not give you a service charge on your card.
They charge the owner.
They charge the owner.
Right, Mr. Ortiz?
Well, yes.
You eat up the service charge.
But you're not going to find, you're not going to absorb a ninety-five cents service charge because you'll be left with nickel.
On the tab. Run a Coca-Cola tab.
So it's a percentage on it anyway, regardless.
Well, just make it clear. And please record it that he said that there's.
And I will have.
No, no, I'm telling Mr. Garcia because I don't want you coming back next week and saying there's no cash. Okay, could you, Mr. Garcia?
I will have him check to make sure if there was ever any time. If Commissioner's court got through, no cash.
No, no, we're taking cash. Mr. Garcia.
So you continue to accept cash, Mr. Garcia?
Definitely.
There's a motion already, Commissioner, by Commissioner Rubalcava and by.
Follow the pleaser.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you.
3.16 Discussion on Appropriate Action: Election Agreement Between Dimmitt County Clerk and Savala County Clerk for the Dimmitt County Water Improvement District Director's Election. May 4th, 2024, administer all process for early voting, election date duties, tabulation, reporting required by the Texas Election Code.
Judge and Commissioners, Judge, that is not Savala County Clerk. It's the Savala-Dimmitt Water District combined. Basically.
Do we have a backup, Mr. Garcia, as to what the costs are?
Well, it's more a cost than none, Judge. They provide all the expenses and salaries. It's a very short-lived early voting period. And it's only for registered members of the water district, which at last count was about fifty-two. So only those fifty-two people can vote in this election.
So just for clarification purposes, Mr. Garcia, there is no cost to the county?
No.
Essentially, this is just an agreement to authorize you to assist in that election process? And to use the facilities?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Garcia. I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Rubalcava. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Uranda. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.17 Discussion on Appropriate Action: Approval for the County Clerk, Mr. Mario Garcia, to attend the County and District Clerks Association Texas Region Aid Spring Conference on April the 10th or the 12th. I have a motion by Commissioner Rubalcava.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Uranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.18 Discussion on Appropriate Action: Amend the COVID-19 Leave Policy as per Changing State and Local Regulations.
Morning, Judge and Commissioners.
Morning, Mr. Ortiz.
I brought this through Commissioner's Court on request by some employees. Because as it stands right now, in order to get paid for the COVID hours the county has approved, you have to have either an official test by a county, Dimmitt County tester, or through the doctor's office. Although now, since the county is not doing testing anymore, and also we've had some reports that that employees will call the doctor's office and say, I took an at-home test. Can I go and get an official test? And they're like, no, just stay home for X amount of days and then you can go back to work. So due to the reluctance of some doctor's offices not wanting to give us the official test, wanted to see if you wanted to leave the policy as is or if you want to start accepting the at-home test as backup.
No.
I say no. But that's my vote. Questions? I can send you a text picture of an at-home. Essentially correct?
Well, I don't want to change it, but some other employees asked if I could bring this forward.
I believe that if the doctor doesn't want to do a test. Who's to say that I tested my chin and I don't want to go to work? And I took my self-test here and it turns out positive. Now I see you that as a.
Right, no, no, I see that right.
But maybe we might look at it this way. If they have a self-test kit and say some of us were tested, maybe we can do it for them at whatever testing agency you select and make it as an official. I'm willing to go that route if they want to bring their test. And that way you have true confirmation then. Because if a doctor does tell you to take five days off, who's to tell you? I can call him and say, I'm positive for COVID and giving my days off.
No, that makes sense because I understand the reasoning back then. Because I can see how people would, not see how people would do, are doing that, but I can see how it'd be easy to do that.
But like I said, I'm willing to get the test if they bring it to me and it'll be proof that.
Okay.
I think out of abundance, a caution for that there won't be any discrepancies or, you know, question as to whether, like Commissioner Rubalcava said, if it's legit or not. I think we should leave the policy as it is. And if anybody does want to use a home test because the doctor doesn't want to give them a Commissioner Alonso has generously said he'll go ahead and do it.
I'll let you go. Thank you.
We don't want to take them from their days.
I'm going to motion for no action. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries.
But these are only our Dimmitt County.
Correct. 3.19 Discussion on Appropriate Action: Approval to Adjust the Difference at the CSA Building for the Hot Mix Precinct Order.
Just this item is basically repeatedly approved for J.J. to perform that party night project that the CSA worked on. They utilized hot mix instead of cold mix on that project for lacking material on the cold mix side. In actuality, we ended up, of course, hot mix is a much better product. It's more expensive, but it is a much better product. At this point, if they put through a test, as you probably are aware, their contents are what they found in there. The main donuts, if it would have been cold mix, we would have had to repair it at our own cost. Because it wouldn't have been very responsible. The hot mix is basically like concrete. Once it sets, it's tight. It tighten up. It's dense by so. But the difference is approximately four thousand dollars more. We approved the job, but we approved the wrong amount. And this is for clarification.
So it's four thousand dollars more?
Yes, ma'am. Instead of one thirty-five, it's one thirty-nine.
Four thousand dollars. There's no backup.
We don't have the backup.
Okay. Well, I had my notes.
I was going to make a motion to table it and put it on the next agenda so we can have the backup on hand.
Right. That best wording would be change order. Not a change order?
Yes.
Correct, Mr. Garcia?
No.
Why not? That's the way we thought it all the time.
Because you actually approved the amount and you made a change order. In this case, it was actually read incorrectly and we didn't notice it until after.
So you made this right here? You worded this? Did you word it this? That way it's on the agenda?
No.
Because this is a judge. It should be.
Right, because it should have read when we all approved it because we were going to go with the hot mix. That's when we should have approved one thirty-nine. There is no change order because it was never approved at one thirty-five. It was actually with hot mix, but the wrong map was read out. So that's why we're going with one thirty-nine.
We read out the one thirty-five and that's.
I don't have a problem, but now you said we never approved it. You just said we never.
You approved the one thirty-five and it should have been one thirty-nine because it's on the hot mix. So they went with the one thirty-five, which was the cold mix. That was not correct.
Hot mix was not on the cold?
Yes, it was. Yes, it was on there. It was just one thirty-five cold and one thirty-nine.
So you were just adjusting the one thirty-five?
Correct.
No, they just adjusted to go with J.J.
Okay.
With the hot mix, but it was one thirty-five that was read off. It's taken one thirty-nine.
That is why I'm saying they went from cold to hot mix. So there would be a change, correct?
No.
But we went with the cold.
No, we went with the hot.
The proposal says, the first proposal for one hundred and thirty-five thousand says cold mix.
Right, and if you look further down, it's one thirty-nine.
On the next proposal.
Right.
Okay.
That's what they said.
Was one thirty-nine, but what was approved was one thirty-five. So it becomes the change order because it says cold mix. The second one says hot mix. It was not our fault that we overlooked the hot mix. So now we have to bring it back to the change order because that's four thousand dollars more. There were not both hot mix. There were cold mix, hot mix. If we approve the cold mix.
But the commissioner was going to go with hot mix.
I know. He was going to go with hot mix. We accident, we approved, the court approved the cold mix.
So all we're doing is approving the one thirty-nine.
The four thousand dollar difference, which is a change order to adjust for the four thousand dollars.
My question is, do we table it because of the wording? Or and bring it back and because I don't have backup, so.
A change order is done usually before the work is performed. If the work is already being performed, we're short four thousand dollars, we need to pay four thousand dollars.
That was his plan.
That's the difference, the change order. Before the work is performed, the county, the commissioner's court, we need additional funds to complete the project. We don't have it now. We're going with the hot mix or the cold mix. Then if it's approved that way, it's change orders for now. It's acting back.
I think in the past, that's how it was done, but technically, the change order is before the work's done. And to approve a change in price, it should need to be approved.
Again, we're not consistent.
That's why. So we can accept this?
But y'all are not consistent because y'all used to do things a certain way before that maybe perhaps wasn't necessarily the right way to do it.
But the only reason we found out because when we went to, I'm going to check in in a minute. We have to admit it. So you pay it and that's why.
But when you brought it back by then?
Okay.
When you were done with it, when you brought it back again?
I did. That's why if this thing hasn't been paid, the four thousand hasn't been paid because that was not.
And you don't have backup? Can you have?
No, that's right.
You say you don't have backup? You have copies? I can give you my copies.
Are we going to accept it?
What was your question, Commissioner?
I said, can we just approve it with this?
That was my question.
You're making an adjustment to balance and it's due because the work's already been performed. I don't see a problem.
I will draw my notes to J.
Is there a motion to approve to adjust the difference at the CSA building? For the hot mix by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Juan Carmona. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Aye.
I have one opposition. Commissioner Rubalcava. Ms. Manos, can you get us copies of this, please? Or if you want to get Melissa to get copies so they can get backup, please? 3.2 Discussion on Appropriate Action: To Propose to Open the Water Account with the City of Carrizo for the CSA Building. Motion by Commissioner Rubalcava.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Carmona, Alonso Carmona. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.21 Discussion on Appropriate Action: To Hire a Full-Time Custodian for the Courthouse Maintenance, effective March 26, 2024, Precinct Two. Motion by Commissioner Rubalcava.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Any discussion?
Judge, under daily draw, it's going to be as of today.
So you're going to amend your motion, Commissioner Rubalcava?
To the.
Amend the motion, Mr. Garcia, to reflect effective date, April 2nd, 2024. Yes, we had a discussion from Commissioner Uranda. Now we have one from Commissioner Juan Carmona. Go ahead, Commissioner.
It's either custodian or a groundskeeper.
Groundskeeper.
Well, he needs to put. And he actually, it should say, it needs to say custodian because his budget reflects custodian.
They help the girls and.
Well, he would have to help the, I mean, I'm not going to tell you how to do manager. But on his budget, the line item says custodian.
So he's going to be helping, what's his name?
A judge.
Judge?
Yes.
You're the court.
Yes. I won't have him anywhere else but here.
Judge of the court, allow custodian slash groundskeeper in a minute?
Because he can, he can allow his staff to do as a police. He's their department head. But on the budget, it's specifically, and it's titled as a custodian position.
During budget, does that think we can correct that?
We can. Other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.22 Discussion on Appropriate Action: Approval to Purchase a 330-Gallon of Fire-Aid Firefighting Foam for Class B Fires.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioner.
Morning.
May I approach the bench, please?
It's not there.
What I gave you guys, what I gave the court right now is just showing what we're looking at as far as if we're going to be purchasing the foam. This is going to be by gallon. As you can see on the table, each gallon of foam is fifty-two dollars. If you go through the line items, it tells you how many gallons of foam and how much is going to cost the county to purchase. If you look, if you can see in the table that there is two ten thousand dollars. If you're looking at the last one where it says the three hundred and thirty gallons of foam are by bulk, is ten thousand dollars. For three hundred gallons, if we buy them separately, is seventeen thousand, one hundred and sixty. So what I'm just giving the court is just showing that if we buy, if we're buying by bulk, we're going to be saving up to seven thousand, one hundred and sixty.
Questions?
I have a question. Mr. Torres, is this one type A or type B foam?
It's type A. It's type A, yes. It's type A, it's type A and B, sir. So it's used for.
This one says class B. This one says class B. It's class B.
But it's a class B fires, but what type of foam?
It's a class B foam, sir. I apologize.
So a class B foam?
Yes, sir. So, Mr. Torres, I'm going to go back to my initial concern.
This information came out of the FEMA. And basically saying that the type A foam is the one that is biodegradable and does not have the product against cancer.
Yeah, and then the one that I'm, as far as the, as you can see with the foam that I'm trying to get is the class A and B foams.
Right. So the B, are you saying that you're going to have, are you still going to be using the B? Which is the one that's.
Which is the, yeah, which is the one you're saying that has the, that is not biodegradable.
So you're going to be using the.
No, sir. We're going to be using the class A's. I, I don't know why. Class A's.
Okay, so why did you say A, B? Because you can.
Because you're able to use it for both. You're able to use it for both, but class B foam is like, I represent the last time, class B foam is used for a heavier type of fire, which is, of course, which is jet fuel, everything like that. That's what it's, what the class A, B foam is. It's allowing you to use it for that. But our main use is going to be for class A fires.
I understand. See, we're talking about two different things. If you're talking about class of fires, I'm talking about the type of foam that you're facing to order.
Yes, which is the class, it's a class A and B foam. It can be used for both, but the percentage of what's in there is more class A's.
Okay. So it's a, you're ordering a type A, B foam?
Yes.
So you're. I'm. Look, like I initially stated, my concern is only what you're going to be exposed to.
Yes, sir.
You and your personnel. The cost is, if we need it, we need it, just like.
Yes, sir.
I've always been a strong supporter of everything y'all do with your, with anything y'all do. My concern is what you're going to be exposed to. And just don't want to be a part of, like you see on P D, if you work for, or if you were a firefighter for Dimmitt County within this year, you may be entitled to a compensation for a lawsuit. There's already been several on the type B foam, and that's why I'm concerned with that. But you're telling me it's a type.
It's a type, yes, sir. It's a type A foam.
No, this is A and B, and then this one says class B.
That's why I would be tied to it.
I think what we need to look at, it's. This is, I've been dealing with foam for the past forty-five years. And yet I'm glad that I haven't got cancer. So it's the way you know how to use it. We don't go in there because there's foam. We're going to go in there and walk and get our suits. We always fight the fires upward, which means that here is the foam toward the oil pad. We're not going downward. That is ridiculous. Firefighter, you got to understand that safety comes first for all of our, or every emergency response. A company right now, it's more a governmental issue than a company. Because it's H U under the number and the commercial you say is for naval, air force, government. Government builds their own foam, same as the Texas force, I mean, the commit, correction of, what do you call it?
The Texas person I said to Corby Fire Furniture, they also sell the.
They've heard this foam, but they do tell you that it's got contaminants if you want to take a risk. I don't think a company was going to, they're sales the foam is going to put themselves as liability for they're selling you a product that sells, that causes cancers. Nowadays, everything causes cancer. You eat a candy, it causes cancers. You smoke a cigarette, it causes it. Cancer comes when you look for it by yourself. And we follow all the regulatory regulations that are, that come in play. Meat carries cancer. Jesus, what.
And every, 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 you, every commercial that I see, it's constant exposure of foam. We're only using this every once in a while. We're not going to be, every fire that we go to, I'm going to be spraying foam on everything. This is just for any type of petroleum fires, gasoline fires, oilfield fires, vehicle fires. We face getting cancer from vehicle fires as much as we're going to get exposure to the foam as well. I'm not, I'm not trying to, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to talk back onto that one. Like, I'm just, I'm just letting you know that, of course, the lawsuits that are coming in are coming in through, of course, for people that have been in the Navy, that have worked with airport fire departments. But YouTube, they're constant exposure. It's not if they're always using.
Can you get type A foam? Just type A foam?
Type A foam, we can get type A foam, but it's not going to, it's not going to be, it's not going to be more. I'm going to say, it's not going to be more aggressive on type petroleum fire.
These people there are talking about how their counsel gave them issues because of the liability. They don't want to be held liable for purchasing the type B foam. So when he went to type A foam, he clarified it and said biodegradable foam, which means, and in actuality, this states that if you use type B foam, you're supposed to remediate because it contaminates. because it contaminates the water if you, if you use it somewhere where there's a stream of anything of that nature.
Yes, sir.
So that's my only concern, Mr. Torres, to be honest with you. If you would've showed up here and said, hey, I'm gonna buy, buy a tote of type A foam, I'd mostly approve it, but it still says type B, and you're still a concern to me, honestly.
Well, I, I'm, I'm gonna tell you the, everything, like I say, we fight it the proper way. We don't use it regularly, it's only during storms. We don't use it for houses, we don't use it for automobiles, we don't use it for anything. We just use it when the, when the storms come in and the battery takes it. And again, I'm, I'm under, if, and Mr. Torres can make that, uh, this, this we've been using for years, and this is what the companies, oil companies use. So am I supposed to tell an oil company, don't give me this foam because the court wants Class A foam? No, we're gonna get whatever we get donated, as long as we practice within safety. That MSDS sheet that he sent you, did you read it?
Yep.
And it starts to get unsafe, it's probably biodegradable. And that, I mean, I, I, I don't, I don't know what else to tell you, but, I mean, and I hardly, this is one time that I do wanna speak hardly on regard, on my firefighters. Let's be safe with them, let's take care, cure of this issue. Uh, we need this foam, I'm not gonna go to an oil company and tell them, uh, would you like to donate foam, but it has to be Class A, because they're gonna say, this is what we use out there in the oil field, and that's what we have used out there, the oil, oil field with them. They sometimes have, have a, a, a tote there that we may borrow some, some don't, but we're, we're exposed to cancer any, on any item there's out there. Except that they, they look more at the firefighters because for the prolonged use of using the foam, we use it out now and then. A tote lasts us, what, three years? By the time we ran out?
Yes, sir.
And that, that's what, that's when we ran out this time, and we asked certain individuals, they said they were gonna look into it, I made contact with certain individual companies, and they said, yes, just send me whatever we need. So I already started the process, but I don't know if they're gonna accept it. I can depend on, or we can depend on a local company without fracking, without foam, and so they decide, we're gonna donate it. I've done it, we did it for a local company, five years in a row, seen me a resume of fighting for running, foam, 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 and we got $5,000, we never saw those $5,000. But I kept doing the resumes until I finally quit doing it, and that's a local company here. So I finally quit because every year, we got $5,000 for it, we got $5,000 for it, but we never saw those $5,000.
Judge, may I, could we ask, oh, Mr. Torres, for his opinion of this, if it's allowed with the, uh, concern?
Yes, Mr. Torres, you can please come forward.
Yes, your opinion, Mr. Torres, in this, to this concern?
Well, yeah, I, I, I don't know what materials you're, you're having reviewed or not reviewed. I've been provided some, I don't know the full extent.
Mr. Torres, can you speak to the mic, cause Commissioner Juan can't hear you?
Okay.
You're welcome.
I don't know what materials you reviewed, I believe I was provided a copy once, and, and, but I do know that in some of these oil and, and gas fires, you know, without it, they may not be able to put out the fire. And if it becomes a hazard to our firefighters, you know, then you gotta weigh the hazard versus the risk. Now, they are volunteer fire, the fires, if it's biodegradable, then they shouldn't have too much problem, and it's used appropriately, and I think that's a real important key that Commissioner Carmona brings up, when used appropriately, you don't spray it into the wind, but it goes back into the, uh, firefighter's faces and could cause the possible harm that, you know, some of these chemicals do, do provide. But, uh, you know, I don't think there are any guarantees in, in anything when it comes to firefighting, where it's Class A, Class B, or Class C foams, you know, uh, anybody may turn up with cancer, can they live on, on the foam 100%? I don't know. It's gonna be up to a medical doctor to, or someone who specializes in this type of litigation to connect it to the actual foam, and I'm not a specialist in, in, in that type of litigation. So if it's, the information that's being provided says that it's safe for them to use it, provided they use it appropriately, and, and there's a need for it, there's, then it should be considered.
It should be, uh, so, and based on fact that the county's never purchased the product?
Well, that, that's the problem we've had in the past, and that's a problem that I've addressed with the auditor, you know, whether it's been donated in the past, you know, and we've used it, are we still liable if one of our firefighters becomes, uh, sick of cancer?
Absolutely.
So, uh, we've used it, luckily, we have no reports of anybody having cancer, but at the same time, if we're used to it, it's donated, and the oil company has, uh, insurance to cover the use of our foam, then we should be filing a claim with that insurance to replace the foam so it's not directly out of the county's pocket. That was something I discussed with the auditor, he was gonna talk to Mr. Carmona, I don't know if he did or not. Uh, we need to file the claims of any fire where there's insurance so that we're reimbursed for materials that we're using, and, you know, whether it's foam or anything else that we're using is damaged by the fire.
Yes, Mr. Pereda?
What I was gonna mention was that basically what we, what we can do also is talk to our insurance and-
You can move the little-
And analyze the, the foam, and see which one it is, and basically get back with y'all. From the, from Mr. Pruski.
That's what I was asking.
No, I think we're, we're getting too, right now, the issue is, we need the foam. We can do the analysis, some other people. Right now, we're, we're, I mean, you're gonna lose a firefighter because we didn't approve the foam, and you're gonna lose a firefighter because we didn't approve it, and you're worried about the liability that, what about the, the, uh, family member? That something happens to the firefighter because of the lack of what we have. I need the liability also for the county, even though we're volunteers. If y'all can tell me no, then, I mean-
Exactly, we're still in the liability-
But, but the thing is, again, we've been using all this foam as donated. Right now, right now, times are at the point where the companies are, like, I don't know, they're holding on till the end of the fiscal year, then they offer it, like, they've done it before, but I reached out to them, and all I get is a response is, let me send it up, and- You mentioned, or he mentioned, Commissioner, or you, sorry?
I didn't.
About the gentleman that worked for Silver Bowl, we did the research, they didn't know who we were talking about. He said the gentleman, he's out, he's been working for Silver Bowl for a while. If, if, I would, I would think they would know what employees they would have in the county.
I, I understand your concern, Commissioner, but I also understand the auditor's concern. If we, I, I think he's correct, we should provide it to the insurance company, saying, our volunteer fire departments, uh, our personnel are using this type of, of foam. If they become, are they still covered? That's the important-
The, the other insurance we have is a VFIS, the voluntary insurance for firefighters.
All right, and do they cover it?
They cover dismemberments or anything else, I can find out about it.
And the use of the foam?
I, I can find out about it.
So, can you?
I mean-
I, I recommend you tape it one more time, provide the information from, uh, uh, your insurance-
I will just give up on your-
I don't recommend you give up on it.
No, 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 I mean, the concern is that it's not gonna be purchased, and that's about it. That's what I see right now.
I, I don't think that's, it's, nobody says you don't need it, and if the county doesn't want it-
Three or four months. Commissioner?
Mr. Torres-
You can sit here all day and argue and still go and go to the basic thing, just put it on the floor and open, you don't bid it, you don't get it, simple.
I have a question, Mr. Torres.
Yes, sir.
This foam that you're trying to purchase, what kind of foam have you been using for the past 20 years?
That's exactly the one we've been using now. That's one that we've been, we've used, and we've donated, and that's been donated to us.
What is the problem now, if it was being used for 20 some years, only because it was being donated? Now that we have to purchase it, is that the problem?
That, and, uh, of course, Commissioner Orenda's worried about the liability of us using it.
Because we're depending on all these oil fields and all these, for them to provide everything for us, for the county, just like we depend on the grants to provide vehicles when the county doesn't wanna buy vehicles for our employee, for our deputies. So Stone Guardian told us, you know what, one year we give you vehicles, next year you provide your vehicles, one year we give you vehicle or equipment, and the following year you do the same. Hey, we have to meet in the middle. Have you guys been using this for so long?
I've, I've been in their province for 20 years now, and I've, we've used that same foam. The same foam, that's the product, is what I've used.
The problem, Commissioner, is that he's telling us they've been using the same foam, but from the beginning, all I ask from Mr. Torres is an MSDS sheet, so that we could all know exactly what the foam contains, how far it's at. We didn't get the MSDS sheet.
Yes, you did.
No, hold on, I'm, hold on. So then the problem is, there's two types of foams, Commissioner, A and B. The A is actually cheaper, okay? This isn't something that I invented, it's here, right in International Firefighters Association, okay? It's here, black and white facts, where people have been had concerns because of the type of foam. I don't care, I don't have a problem with foam, but I'm just concerned about there will be, and the liability that the county's gonna take on, once we approve to purchase it. Now, when we purchase it, and we know that it's, something happens, somebody gets sick, we purchased it knowing what the issue is. Hey, you know what, that's the only concern, we, we can be fair about it, but it's right here. I mean, it's, it's no big deal with the foam, they could get Class A foam, but they, they're still going to Class A and B. The Class A foam does basically the same thing, but it's biodegradable, you don't have to worry about cleaning it up. The Class B foam, in fact, they're supposed to be cleaning it up, and they're not cleaning it up.
That's the oil field, when they remediate-
That doesn't matter.
No, 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 it doesn't matter, because we, we're not a cleanup crew, we're not a hazmat crew.
So you're putting to other issues?
No, 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 because you're saying that it causes cancer, then we need to clean it up. That is wrong, because one, once we put a fire out in an oil pit, the, the company remediates that, that pit, you should know better than that. Uh, they remediate whatever area is contaminated with soft fresh soil. We, we don't remediate. Hazmat, when there's a, a, a fire, and it contains oil on a truck, big truck, we call a regular service, they're certified hazmat, they come and remediate, we don't clean out, we don't do nothing after that. We just put the fire out, and we leave.
Are you guys out of foam right now?
Yes.
Yes.
My motion, and now I'm just gonna vote, my motion is to purchase the foam. Commissioner, before you, uh, finish with your, before you finish with your, uh, motion, um, the concern I have is the, there's not enough money in the budget line item to purchase $10,000 worth, so, um- Do they have in your line item?
Ma'am, the-
Correct.
What was the budget adjustment?
Can you give me one second, Mr. Torres?
Yes, ma'am.
There's not enough money in the budget line item to purchase the $10,000 that was requested. Uh, Mr. Torres put in for a budget adjustment, um, for the amount of $9,500 to be transferred to equipment, to make it a total of about $17,000. However, in speaking to our auditor, Mr. Pereda advised me, and we did the research, contacted tech, we can't move it from the stipend, because the stipend goes to the individual that's in charge of that, and, which is Mr. Commissioner Carmona. Commissioner Carmona obviously does not accept or does not get paid because of that conflict of interest of being a commissioner. However, we cannot move that, that has to stay there on the 9,500, the 9,500 has to stay in stipend, because God forbid something happens to Commissioner Alonso, and he's no longer the chief, we have to be able to provide the 9,500 to another chief, if we have to appoint another chief.
Wait, do they have 500 in the budget for them to purchase $500 worth now, and then do your budget adjustment, if you have money elsewhere instead from your stipend? That's what you basically can't do.
Hold on, let, let Commissioner Drubukawa finish, please, say that again, please.
Judge, if they have the same reasons, they have $500.
They have $8,000 in equipment, that's where you were gonna try to take it out, correct?
Correct.
From equipment?
But, but we did a budget adjustment, and here's where, where again, consensus, that is the word now, that we're looking at consensus. You made the budget adjustment with David and I being there present. We were there, and you said, where, where can we move? You said from any, any part of your budget that allows you, that you can do it. I said, can I take it? And I asked you, can we take it out of the stipends where it says, hey? You said, yes. You never said you were gonna call tech. And I, and every time that I ask you, you always give me the runaround of another thing, that, that it's there, and it's sitting there, then it comes back, and then, hold on, let, let me finish. Uh, and, and where it comes down to, Mr. Pereda, hey, you're, you're the auditor, we asked you all these questions, can we move it from here to put it over here? You say, yes, and then, and then all of a sudden, we jump over here, and, and it's illegal.
Because, before we- There's no pointing us, pointing fingers.
No, 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 I'm not pointing fingers.
But, but, let me tell you one thing, before I could buy tires or something for the jury department, all right? It came out of my budget, and then we transferred it to them. Now, don't tell me no.
I don't remember.
No, don't, whatever, we're asking something, you don't remember? I, I bought tires for the jury department out of my account.
Maybe you did, but that was some time ago, before we-
Well, regardless, if I purchased it, I got money in my budget, if I purchased it, it'll be all right.
Not anymore, we need to figure where we buy it from.
Okay. I'll, I'll second the motion's by the court.
I just wanna mention also, whether it's donated or not donated, we're still liable.
I understand, that's why we bring it before Commissioner's court, when we get that to donate it, it took us three or four years.
But it does it?
You don't have to accept it, even if it's donated, if it's gonna cause cancer.
But if we need it, are you gonna go tell the oil company that we're not gonna accept it?
Well, you need to tell them, this is the type of foam that we want.
No, I can't request what they want, I use what they have.
I won't hear. So Mr. Torres represented to the court the last time that every, every kind of fire that they have in terms of those oil field fires, they use between 5 to 15 gallons per fire. 5 to 15 gallons. Um, Commissioner Alonso represented to the court that one tote lasts about three years. So your motion is that they have, cause if you calculate that, it, it's about 66 fires, 66 oil field fires, if you go at 5 gallons. If you go at 15 gallons, it's 22 of those fires. If you go at 10 gallons, it's 33 of those fires. So your motion, just to clarify, is that you are motioning that they purchase up to the 8,000 or whatever amount is on the equipment budget item? Is that correct?
And if they have to do a budget adjustment for more, then they can come back.
So Mr., I guess whenever, we'll see how it gets voted, but, um, the, the, excuse me, the, uh, the motion, Mr. Garcia, is going to reflect the approval to purchase fire aid firefighting foam for Class B fires? A and B? A and B fires?
Yes, ma'am, sorry.
A and B fires?
Yes, ma'am.
To the amount allocated in the maintenance and repair equipment of the fire department, which reflects $8,000. That motion is by Commissioner Drubukawa.
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Juan Carmona. Any further discussion?
Ma'am.
Yes, sir.
May I?
Yes, sir.
No, I'm sorry, Judge.
Go ahead.
Mr. Pereda, back, back in the day, we can do, we say, we can do it no more. When we, we purchased the, the bulletproof vest for the, for the deputies out of our account, so from now on, we can't do nothing like that.
You paid it out of the COs, Chrisa.
Sorry?
You paid.
You paid it out of the COs, he said.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I got money, but yet I can't buy the foam.
On the COs, that was basically any equipment that we want, or, um, it wasn't necessarily tied down to our money.
If, 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 if I didn't, if I don't wear a vest, it'd be all right to purchase it to somebody else, all right? If, if, if I didn't, if I don't wear a vest, it'd be alright to purchase it to somebody else, alright? It's not under, you said, the equipment.
Yes, because it's equipment. And that's purposeful under the...
So my equipment would be like a tractor or whatever, truck or whatever.
The home is for the county, yes.
So I just want to get it clear, Krishna. We always get into these conversations about what we can do, and then we'll change later on again.
You always want to specify what it's going to be used for, who's going to handle that. But it was, it's all for equipment. That's the only thing that we buy for. You can't do it for office supplies or maintenance supplies or what have you. It has to be no...
That's why he's saying the, you can't, you can't buy it for the phone, because the phone's considered like a supply, office supply. And he said it has to be for equipment. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Aye.
I have an opposition, Commissioner Linda. Three point two three, discussion and appropriate action approval to purchase approval to purchase gas detectors for the operation of the county landfill.
Judge, we got two, I have a proposal for three, but the other one didn't come in. Um... So we have two calls. It's less than twenty-four hours of due required to get a...
Are you requesting for the, there's one for two thousand five hundred and fifty, and then there's one for two thousand one hundred and forty dollars eighty-three cents. Are you requesting the court to go with the two thousand one hundred and forty or the two thousand five hundred and fifty?
I wonder if you see the court could put the two thousand five hundred, because that's in, I think, Wardington or Pleasanton. The other one is on state. If they need to come fix, fix it or re-replace it in Texas.
Motion to approve the two thousand five hundred.
I have a motion...
Five hundred.
Excuse me?
Five hundred.
I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Discussion and appropriate action approval to allow Commissioner Dubucava to use Arena Section Three on May the ninth, twenty twenty-four for the county employees' Mother's Day luncheon.
So what?
Motion by Commissioner Juan.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Three point two five, discussion and appropriate action approval to install all and any missing utilities at the Dimon County Solid Waste Facility, including internet service. Ma'am? Go ahead, Commissioner Dubucava.
We have light and water, uh, we have the tank for the non-pollable water, but we're lacking the internet service, so we can have the scale up and running and the computers for the way in.
On the internet service, Commissioner Dubucava, uh, I don't know, it's because I don't have any backup. Do you have, um, who you were planning to use, or is it the same internet service we have already?
It's the same as ours. For now, we have a hotspot, just so they can start using.
Who's, who's?
So Mr. Mendez can start practicing it.
Who is, um, the Internet Provider Service, Mr. Mendez?
Uh, Spectrum.
Spectrum?
Yes, sir.
Is there other utilities that are missing, Commissioner? Just that, so it's just a, um, internet service?
TCQ came to do the inspection, and we had, uh, we were just missing the plaque.
The plaque.
So we already installed the plaque, and we sent them the pictures last week. So they said that we get back to them within a week or so, so they can be with the approval to start.
To be, to be operational. Commissioner, will you advise us so that we can have a, um... Groundbreaking grant opening, just so that the community knows? I know that, um, just to clarify to the community that this is not your typical landfill where it can be utilized by everybody, but just so that the community has some transparency that we are operational and running, um, so just let us know, please.
And then I'll put it back in the agenda and discuss the days it will be used for the other commissioners. I know we, we have trash, we have trash trucks every day, except for Tuesdays and Fridays. We only have one trash truck. So maybe designate those two days if they have...
Two other commissioners?
Because we have to keep it at the twenty ten.
Where are we going to add it?
With the city.
That's what I was gonna... I just said in the comment, you know, there was an issue. We don't pick up the brush, we do it on a quarterly basis. I constituents from Carizo Hill are calling me, they already took out the brush because you're picking up. I said, I'm picking up. It's in the newspaper, it's on Facebook. I said, what do you mean it's on Facebook? Yeah, the city manager put it, you're picking up, there's, you're designated. I said, no, 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 that was for the landfill, for us to get permission to go and throw. Not for us to pick up from the constituents, because I have a lot of work, I don't have time to be picking up brush. I said, but since you already saw it, take it out, we'll pick it up. But I think they're misunderstanding what she put it on Facebook, but instead it was just for us to know the days we were designated to use the landfill, it's immediate brush.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
By the same token, ma'am, there's a rumor that I don't want to pick up because I lost. But no, I, I can pick up, you know, they told us straight out in the landfill not to pick up brush until further notice. So that's the reason I haven't picked up anywhere, not even in Carizo, so... Just for the record, I'm not upset because I lost, and I, I'm going to punish the constituent. Until they give us the go-ahead, we'll start picking them up. And, 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 and it's like, uh, Commissioner said, we'll do it accordingly. It's the city's job to do that job, but we help them when they ask us. We're not, our, our role is not to be out there collecting brush and all of that. Our role is the county roles, and that's it. Just so that people are aware, that are listening, that...
That you're not mad.
I think that's, that's another, I got this, but again...
You're not mad either.
Oh, no, no.
He's mad.
In the day, I get mad, you all know it.
Oh, my God, I got to do that.
Three point two six, excuse me, sorry, um...
You need a motion?
I need a motion, yes. Um, I need a motion to approve to install the Spectrum Internet Services at the Dimon County Solid Waste Facilities. Which mad brother wants it?
Me.
Okay. Commissioner Alonso Carmona made the motion, is there a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Juan. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Three point two six, discussion and appropriate action approval to continue repairs on unit number forty-seven, precinct four. No action? Three point two six, excuse me, that was three two point two. Three point two seven, discussion and appropriate action approval to transfer one full employee from sanitation to road and bridge precinct four.
I'm trying to bring one from sanitation to precinct four.
And this is going to another precinct where you're, where you're on it?
I, I just thought you had to do, um... Payroll notice, but I know what you like to do, so we're going to go ahead and do it, because you did tell me that.
Yeah, it is, I took off, because I did, you hit the Commissioner's court.
Well, I have to do the same thing with Ms. Delman, so we'll go ahead and do it. We'll be consistent, Commissioner Dubucava.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Urenda.
So, second.
Second by Commissioner Dubucava.
So we don't have to bring it to the...
If you manage your own departments, you have to turn down the both of them, too.
Paying them is...
Mr. Ortiz might have a difference in a payment.
No, I have a question, since we're here. It's an actual employee you already have going to open position over there. Did you double check that his salary meets with the transfer?
I'm ahead of the law. And I'll be here next Commissioner's court saying, definitely will.
Like somebody will?
I'm kidding.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Discussion and appropriate action approval to hire two full-time employees and one operator and one secretary for precinct four?
Yes, it's not precinct four, it's the landfill.
Those are all approved positions, Commissioner?
Yes.
The operator, I thought you already had, I thought he had already been working.
I don't remember if it was, is that, I got sick, so I don't remember if it was about the Commissioner's court just to be the safe side.
Yeah, because he, he's been working, no?
Yeah, but I just want to make sure it was, um, it was when I was sick, so it was, it wasn't with the Commissioner's court. So now that I came back, that's why.
So you're asking for it to, the operator to be retroactive?
Yes.
Because he started when? I'm going to amend the motion to approve to hire two full-time employees, one operator who will be, uh, retroactive December. I don't have that date, Mr. Ortiz, maybe can give me that date?
I don't have the date, um... It was... I want to say that it was approximately December fifteenth, I want to say.
Were you working till December fifteen? Till, uh, at the end?
We were advising you to hire him, that the TCQ was coming, making sure he goes up and running.
And a secretary for the solid waste facility? That is Commissioner Dubucava's motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Three point two nine, discussion and appropriate action approval to hire a full-time employee mechanic for precinct four, which is, I'm assuming Metroplex?
Yes.
So what?
Commissioner, um... I'm just for clarification purposes. That one is up position also, correct?
You have a mechanic? You have two?
Am I putting it on three? She does.
Motion by Commissioner Juan Carmona?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Page forty, Commissioner. Three point three, discussion and appropriate action approval to hire one full-time employee for the trash pickup precinct four? I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Three point three one, discussion and appropriate action approval to hire one full-time employee for general labor precinct four? Is that one for road and bridge? This one, you lost the employee, Commissioner? Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Juan Carmona? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Three point three two, discussion and appropriate action approval to purchase ten two-yard rear load dumpsters, ten three-yard... Ten three-yard rear load dumpsters, five four-year... Five four-yard rear load dumpsters, precinct four?
Wait.
Monday.
Are, are you, are we still fixing the dumpsters with the bottoms of them?
We have, we need seven that don't have any, we can't repair anymore. Yeah. And then we have in the waiting list, we have like thirty new customers on the waiting list. And our dumpsters are expensive. For these, it's like ten thousand dollars just to purchase these.
I saw that on here, well, on here it has, you have a subtotal of twenty-two thousand two hundred and sixty-four?
Yes, because it's ten thousand, it was close to ten thousand, just for the bigger size for...
Commissioner, on the shipping date, is there any way we can pick it up? So that we can save on the shipping cost, the freight, or... Where, where are these located at?
Tennessee.
Sheriff, you want to make a trip to Tennessee? We can stop over in Louisiana. I mean, it'll save us three thousand five hundred to save.
The sheriff doesn't have a loaded one, right?
We can take a conference over to Tennessee with this little one.
I get you really want me out of your press.
Motion.
Commissioner, so, um, there's no way we can pick it up? I'm just saying so that we can save on the shipping cost. There may be some casinos along the way.
Well, I'm thinking about that, I could have CDL, so... I'll invite the sheriff to go help me.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Urenda? One, I mean, because three thousand five hundred, I mean, we can... I heard you, but we're still trying to figure out if we're going to save three thousand five hundred so we can buy your phone. Okay. Commissioner Urenda, put it on the table, I have, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona? Any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I apologize, Commissioner, you're going to get that out of which budget? Commissioner?
I have it in sanitation.
Sanitation, okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Yes, we all voted. You did it? Okay, we're going to reopen that agenda item. Commissioner Juan has a question for Commissioner Dubucava.
Can we get some of your old canisters, because something we use that metal? And I had to go buy it, uh, jams? My God, they're expensive. So...
Maybe two or three of them. I'll give it to the guys just so you aren't that good that we need them, you guys?
We can recycle them.
We'll recycle it.
Three point three three, discussion and appropriate action approval for Commissioners Precinct One, Jose Urenda, Precinct Three and Six, Juan Carmona, Precinct Four, Five and Seven, Valerie Dubucava to attend the twenty twenty-four TCD RS Annual Conference in Austin, Texas. Motion by Commissioner Dubucava, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Juan Carmona? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Three point three four, discussion and appropriate action approval to advertise for internet service? Motion by Commissioner Juan Carmona?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dubucava, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Three point three five, discussion and appropriate action approval to advertise for phone service? Motion by Commissioner Dubucava?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Juan Carmona? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Three point three six, discussion and appropriate action approval to work half-day on April eighth for the solar eclipse? Motion by Commissioner Dubucava, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona?
Ma'am?
Yes, sir, you may.
Don't forget to wear your aluminum foil on your head, so it don't radiate on you. Don't pretend to have a key, it'll increase your bigger by.
And we'll all be, hopefully, we get a fake, it'll make you wear metal, a key or something.
Commissioner Juan says if you put the silver in your hand, you'll get more white. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Three point three seven, discussion and appropriate action approval for courthouse security Jackie Segura to attend the TCIC T-LIT's Mobile Access Training on March nineteenth in Uvalde, Texas? I think I'm going to take this off, Mr. Pereira, she didn't go to this... I think I'm going to take this off, Mr. Pereira, she didn't go to this, she, she, did she go? She went? So this is?
Reimbursement.
Reimbursement, okay. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner, who was my second? Who said second? Commissioner Valerie Duca? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.38, discussion and appropriate action, approval for courthouse security Jackie Segura to attend TCO and CLEET courthouse specialist certification training in Conroe, Texas? Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Duca?
It's five, she, the hotels were five by three?
Uh, let me see.
It says zero nights.
It does say zero nights. Excuse me, Mr. Hernandez? I know, but you didn't put anything on here. Yes, it's for the five nights, Commissioner Duca.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Have we, has anybody else?
Actually, I was going to give, make some comments to Commissioner Duca, as a matter of fact. First of all, I wanted to advise the court, um, that as part of the Operation Lone Star, we did receive, um, the new units for the courthouses for metal detectors. So I'll begin with you, Commissioner Alonso, to see if I could borrow some of your men or any of the commissioners, um, just so that we can set it up, so that we can be compliant with courthouse security, um, that we will, did discuss with Ms. Mary Sandoval, because as you guys know, her office is pretty much the first line of defense when people come in to the courthouse, because they're in the very front. So, moving forward, starting sometime this week, we will be having metal detectors at the front door of the courthouse, we will be having metal detectors in this courtroom, and we will also be having metal detectors on the third floor for the district judges as requested by Judge Flores. That was in part, as I mentioned, or fully paid for by the Operation Lone Star grant, so it was at no cost to the county. Given that we're doing that, there is going to be some heightened security as you come into the courthouse, um, moving forward. Additionally, Commissioner Duca, we did get some applicants for, um, co-inforcer and possibly for an additional courthouse security to assist with Mr., um, Mr. Garcia's department. Mr. Garcia also part of the OLS, we did get a metal detector for the front door, which we will be installing as well over there, um, but just so the court knows that we did get metal detectors. I just wanted to advise the court on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 4.1, discussion and appropriate action, jail status? Do you have a report, Miss Woltis?
Miss Woltis, Sheriff, I want to applaud you guys for passing the jail inspection, and then the marshals. Thank you, you guys did an amazing job. Thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
Sheriff, when you say a thousand two hundred and forty a day, that's all 47, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, does any food meals go there, or just?
Yes, it includes meals and everything.
Is it about the right, about the right amount? I was just wondering, because it says 70,000 for the whole month?
It's 57 of per inmate.
We increased the inmates, with March, we got rid of some of the state inmates, so we are going to give more, more of March. I was wondering, because I've been hearing about it since Judge Marion was here, and then we never heard anything back, Eddie Christian.
He said Judge Marion. Sheriff Marion? You got me all confused today, Commissioner Carmona.
No, we heard about it, but I never, they never even mentioned it, but I thought at that time, they were hoping for $65 a day, so I just didn't agree with them.
It's 57, $57 a day.
Any of these that are, Kimball County prisoners, are they any from the sponsors? The sponsors are being housed in the real... We got 37, so that's low, believe?
Yes, sir.
But some of, those 37, that some are still waiting to be transferred, we're just waiting on that.
Sheriff, have we considered discussing with them to in, increase?
I thought I want to try to get a meeting with them, I know the 19th is supposed to be there, I want to see if I can meet with the partners, also discuss with them, not sure what, I know there's a problem, but we can go through, see if we can get an increase on it, or how much they'll value it.
Yes, because I know that, um, in Savala County, what is it, $75? Mr. Pereira, how much is Savala County getting?
It's not saying fine.
What are they getting?
I don't remember, it was a fine. I'm double checking.
It's 57 per inmate?
Yes, ma'am.
The whole day, or?
A day.
I'm just trying to see your, what did you get your?
Your numbers.
Your numbers, 70,000, 400?
Eight times, uh, eight times a day. 57 times.
So this is, so I thought the report was just for March?
Yeah, this is for March. It had 31 days in March.
It's because you have total days, 1,240 days.
If you have 47 inmates, at 31 days, that'll be 1,487.
I can check again, because that's what, I went through the reports, and that's what it gave me, so I can, I can be checked.
The total cost, if you have 47 inmates, each one, you're charging $57 a day. So you have 47, you have one inmate. It should be $83,049 for the month of March.
Is that inmates that are being transferred out also, or?
No.
So if you have one in, one inmate, one inmate is, is $57 a day. So if you have that inmate there for 31 days, that inmate is going to bring you in $1,767. So if you have $1,767, $1,767 times 31 days, that's, um, that's, uh, $1,367 times 47, because you have 47 inmates, it should be like $83,000.
I can check on the, because I just got this from the marshal report, um, Ms. Cruz wasn't here, so I just went through and checked on it. I can come back next time, I guess.
I'm going to check, they're not, the old 13,000 dollars?
Yes, ma'am.
They, they were always 13.
I didn't know what to check, because a moment we might have for maybe 10 days, they go to court, and they get transferred somewhere else.
That makes sense.
Because that, when I checked, three of them were gone already, at that time, maybe, that's what it is.
Judge?
Monday.
You keep forgetting that they're off on Saturday, Sunday.
Who's off Saturday?
Presenters?
No comment, Mr. Carmona.
They get sleepy.
Any other questions or comments?
Do we table this, uh, this amount, just the amount, Judge, and accept the rest, or? Or do we just go ahead and accept it?
I, we can make the, I will, I will make the motion to accept the report as presented, contingent to Ms. Woltis, the jail administrator, bringing us a number that's reflective of perhaps they need, some aren't here the whole entire 31 days, so, just to, and maybe we can, you can get with Mr. Pereira's office also to look at that expenditure report and that revenue report, because he can be able to tell you how much the marshals are paying us. I have a motion, why make the motion, I have a second?
Sorry.
Second by Commissioner Alonso. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 5.1, discussion and appropriate action, budget adjustment within the county clerk department?
Is correct.
These are correct, is my distinct understanding, Mr. Garcia wants to transfer money from the storage restoration to capital equipment so that he can buy, um, two new typewriters. I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Uranda? Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 5.2, discussion and appropriate action, budget adjustment within the golf course? I believe my understanding from what Commissioner, Mr. Pereira advised me in reviewing this agenda item, this is just to cover the $448, um, for Mrs. Hyman. We had at some point approved Ms. Hyman, uh, to be exempt employee in doing the numbers, Mr. Pereira, they represented an incorrect number, um, not by any, I mean, not that it was on purpose, it was just, I think, my understanding is they just calculated it wrong, so they needed, they're short $448 to make Ms. Hyman exempt.
Yep, we thought she had gotten the increase, so we gave her the increase, but that, we thought that the exempt covered over that, but it was short by $400, and that's what the suggestion is, to make her at the level that she's supposed to be under the exempt amount.
Which is it going to be? You told me that I could move money around for the other employee from the same department.
Okay, this is, this is a correction to something that we should have done.
But you still, no, no?
Yes, it's a correction.
But we're still moving money, which is it, yes or no? That's all I want to know.
Yes, we're doing it because she is not getting paid what, under the exempt status.
But whose fault is it that the amount wasn't put on there?
Okay, I'll take the blame if you want me to.
Okay, so, what are we going to do then? We're going to keep exempting this, or not?
Well, she's supposed to be paid at that amount, at the $35,000, she's not.
You're not following, what is, oh, we're going to be able to change and make adjustments to our payroll?
You can always...
Is that basically what we're doing?
Yes, you can always do that.
Huh?
You can always do that.
Today only?
Today.
I don't have a problem with getting paid, because she, she earns it, but my problem is that you tell me one thing, and then you hear another, the same thing that I asked you, about the young man, and you said no, because you all agreed not to do it, but we're still making a budget adjustment, regardless what it is, regardless, I don't care, your fault, my fault, whoever's fault, but we're making a budget adjustment, and you told me yourself no.
The policy, the policy should be, and that's the purpose of the budget, is that we cannot be giving increases throughout the year, because that's the purpose of the budget, and we had already discussed that the last time, is that we can't, and I'm going to use you as an example, Commissioner Duca. Let's say Commissioner Duca has somebody in her staff, and the budget reflects that they should be getting paid $30,000, and they're very worthy of the $30,000, halfway through the budget, Commissioner Duca can't just unilaterally say, "I'm going to bring money from equipment and move it to the salary to increase his salary, because I feel like he should make more money." That's where we have the budget, during the budget, uh, time for us to do that.
I understand that, but my point is, I had it in my budget, in the payroll, to increase it, and I was told no.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying.
Commissioner, you all approved to make her exempt.
Right.
We just made...
I still not budget adjustment on this one, right?
We, when you all did it, this was during the year, to make her exempt, the wrong amount was budgeted, the wrong amount is given.
We're not going to get nowhere.
I have a question. So her, was she given an increase, or she was just, she needed her to exempt, she's on salary now?
Yes.
When we, when we did the budget back in October of last year, excuse me, approved the budget, she was supposed to be exempt, because she's a full-time employee, she was a full-time employee, she's a department head, and you're just now finding out that you weren't, or ask her, the Department of Labor, that you're not giving her the right amount to make her exempt.
What we knew that we, in order to make her exempt, you all have to increase it by certain amount. We thought that the amount was covered under the increase that you all were giving, but it wasn't, and we were $400 short, and we realized that, that's why we're coming back right now, to make her exempt, because she's not earning comp time right now. She's under exempt, so that's what this budget adjustment is for. To be in compliance.
So, for the dollar amount, we approved rate increasing to 448?
By $400, by $447.
448?
Yes, 448, sorry.
To make it 35,568?
Nothing personal, Ms. Hyman, I'm just asking questions, because I'm told one thing, and then we do another, and it's basically all the time, the same thing over and over and over. So can I give my employee from the same amount from the budget, the $2 that I, that I was requesting?
It's not illegal.
It's not illegal?
No.
Okay, thank you.
You have other questions, Commissioner Duca? I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Duca? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 5.3, discussion and appropriate action, budget adjustment number 31, within Roden Bridge number four? Motion by Commissioner Juan Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 5.4, discussion and appropriate action, budget adjustment number 29, within the jail department? I have a question, Sheriff. On the janitorial supplies, it says you need $18,500?
I don't have it in front of me either.
Because on the data processing for the fifteen thousand, that's the one Mr. Beredas said, I don't think you were here the last time, Sheriff, but that's the one that Mr. Beredas said for solution software, the southern software, the one that Ms. Marion Boyd had brought in, and we had, you and I discussed it, remember? There's a charge of, I think, what is it, Mr. Beredas, twelve thousand? That needed to be additional in order for it to link up from you guys to the JPs, because it's not doing it, and you guys are wanting to get that fifteen thousand and move it over for janitorial supplies, so that would leave you with no, not enough funds to pay for that solution software system.
You wanna go and table it, then we'll...
You want, we can discuss it with Mr. Beredas, I'm just saying, because I know that Judge Spedes has come here several times saying that,
I'd rather get that done.
That it's not, it has not been, what did she say the last time she was here? It has not been, I guess, solution software and the JPs, they're having to do it manually.
Was that to get all the, to bring in?
Yeah. To bring in, I guess, so that it can bridge what you guys have with the JPs, because I guess you're, everything's still being done manually.
Right, no, yeah, but I think, or they would extract, is that what it's gonna cost to get everything from Intech to put it into our software?
I'm not too sure, Mr. Beredas is the one that told me that it was gonna be about twelve thousand, and it comes from the data processing. I'm gonna, motion to table number five point four.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Five point five, discussion inappropriate action, budget adjustment number thirty-seven, within county attorney, SB twenty-two.
I'll just send it. The work, she didn't make my package, but basically, I, I applied for a grant through Senate Twenty-two, got a hundred thousand dollars. And therefore, Mr. Beredas and the county judge were looking at hiring, or having two positions open in the county attorney's office with a salary of thirty-four thousand dollars plus benefits, and that would, basically, you have the cost of a hundred thousand dollars, and that grant would run through, and I hire him up to September thirtieth of this year, right before our budget. So, I've got two applications out already, and just wait to see if this is approved to, see if I can hire somebody. I'm already shorthanded as it is, and still it's not happening, so I'm hoping Ruby doesn't get sick on me.
I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
I'll second it, because I have a question. Wait, you all put it for discussion.
You're gonna second it? Discussion?
The signature's on bottom.
And Mr. Gonzalez, for the record, the reason why you don't have it in your packet is because my office just advised me that we just got it this morning, so that's why it's not in your packet.
And that's why I haven't signed it, because I haven't committed.
See, that's the problem, is you're keen that he wouldn't accept it if he's not signed, and we go again?
It didn't go to you? It goes first to the judge's office, and the judge goes back to me?
No, Mr. Beredas just brings them to me already, he's signed with that commission.
Are you in agreement? I agree that we'll be here.
I know, but we were doing it because we were, he had given us the figures to do.
I got a question. Is this a continuous grant?
I have to apply each year as long as they fund it.
Okay.
I don't know if I'll get it next year, but this was for either investigator or assistant prosecutor, and, or the victim's assistant coordinator.
Yes, I was just wondering, if it was gonna be a continuous.
And, but my problem is, is that I'm shorthanded as, as it is, and we're starting Operation Lone Star, waiting on the grant on that. We've already got, we've been prosecuting the cases, even though we haven't hired Operation Lone Star for a year.
Mr. P, on here, is it the same number, or on the, on the?
There's a blank on the...
Yeah, it's gonna be the one thirty-five or prosecutor.
Oh, forty-one thirty-five, okay.
Other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Say that again?
I'm going to put a new grant, is that their amount?
Thirty-four thousand. Yeah, we broke out a hundred thousand dollars, so we can have, we get from these two firsts, or slash investigator, or slash part-time, the way it was supposed to be, we'll discuss, uh, part-time prosecutor. So, I have those three options, so if I be a one more for, and then I have, I can find somebody for a particular job, for a hundred thousand dollars, investigator, part-time prosecutor, I can do that also. I'm not providing out anything, but I need that. We got the stickers, or prosecutor, I don't know, we can do the white stuff. Was there any questions, I guess?
I think that the judge already have, who they have worked it out, so that's why I wanna add a photo, because I'm in major motion.
Yeah, this is, this wasn't money that was in my budget, this is why it just came in. So, I'm not shifting any money from the budget that I had, because I have none.
No.
No.
My question is, the dollar amount reflects more than what our secretaries or all employees thirty-three is, that's why I'm asking?
Yes, because it's a grant, and it's discretionary upon me on how I spend it. And the reason for the dollar amount is, and it being that way is because, I don't even know if I'm gonna be able to hire somebody. I know that I wanted an investigator at forty-five thousand plus benefits, I just can't hire two people with a hundred thousand dollars. I know that I wanted a part-time or a full-time assistant prosecutor with a hundred thousand dollars, I can't hire someone. In the Operation Lone Star grant, they're telling me I need to request a salary of a hundred thousand dollars for an assistant prosecutor in order for someone to get hired. And that's even more than what I'd be making as the county attorney, but that's what some of the assistant district attorneys are making through the Operation Lone Star grant. But this, this is two separate animals. This is Senate Twenty-two to hire additional personnel to help prosecutors, and Operation Lone Star is another grant. And we're trying to apply and get as much money as we can in for the county. But that's why it's higher, I understand that, and then, I even looked at the possibility of increasing my victim's coordinator's salary, that she's out on surgery, I need to get this money used or it's loomed.
For time, it's up to them, we, we got no control over it, so this is why, you know, wherever you hire, there's no, we can control how much you're gonna pay, if it's a grant, you know?
Yeah, I'm afraid of losing my full-time, because they, you're paying them more than what the grant is, but I can't even use that money to supplement the salary of my existing personnel. The only one I could supplement, is Estela Martinez, who's my victim's coordinator, but she's out for surgery, so... And originally, that was the plan, to supplement her salary, but I don't, hopefully, everything will go well, she'll be back sometime in June, if the elevator's working, or she may be out longer, so that's my other problem. If they release her, come back to work early, she can't climb the stairs, unless I pull her up through a rope and up through a window.
And they're still using the courthouse, for the record, against the order of this court?
That's another thing I discussed with Mr. Beredas.
We have many complaints, just so this commissioner's court knows, that we're receiving them daily, as to the court being used as we speak.
And we have a hearing set for April the eleventh, and that's the other item I wanted to discuss with what your judge has said. I discussed with Mr. Beredas, we may wanna see if we can amend the Operation Lone Star grant to put the purchase of the Petri building in the grant.
They're not, oh, and that's already acquired, they're not allowing to purchase any buildings. I acquired last week when we were in Rock Rock. No, no purchases of any kind of buildings, they're not allowing it in the grant, no sir. That's why Savala County was not able to get their new sheriff's office, because they didn't allow it.
What's the buildup on the elevators to get them fixed?
We had a inspection done last week, and we are in the process of filling the emergency grant through the, what is it called again, the historical commission, because as you know, it's a historical building. We cannot fix that building or make any restorations to that building, and putting a new elevator is considered a restoration, so we have to go through the historical commission. And the historical commission has an emergency grant that will allow us to rapidly and expeditiously fix that elevator at the cost of that grant. We met last Friday, Mr. Beredas, last Thursday, with the engineer and the individuals that are doing the historical grant, and we're hoping to get that in by this week, sometime. But it, it's, it looks like it'll take anywhere between five weeks and up to just get the elevator ordered, you know, ordered. And then it's gonna take another couple of weeks to get it, so they told us how much, Mr. Beredas? Like, we're looking at maybe a couple of months before we can actually get that repaired or restored, so...
But it's already in the process?
It's in the process, it's in the process, and that also to include, I'm sure you guys received the, from Train, the quote, the quotes. So, what happened, Commissioner Du Lacava, just to, to bring you up to speed, is that there's been many issues with that courthouse. One to include the failure or that it's non-operational is the elevator, that's one of the most important ones, because we're not ADA compliant, at this point, we are not ADA compliant, as I mentioned to the court the last time. It is a seven hundred dollar a day fine when we're not complying with ADA. Second, there's been shortages in the electrical, that has been an issue. I'm not sure if you are aware, but about a week or two ago, the fire department got called, and the courthouse got evacuated, because there was a distinct smell of smoke or fire coming in, so they had to evacuate the building due to the AC units, possibly a shortage in the AC units. So, Commissioner Alonso and myself have been in discussion with Train representatives, they went to go look at it. As a matter of fact, the Train representative was there that day, that there was a possible, they thought was a smoke or fire, and he's advised, does that, that all the ACs need to be replaced right now? There is no AC, working AC on that floor, there has been residents in your precinct, my precinct, his precinct, that have called because they're in there, it's hot or it's cold, and we spoke with TAC. TAC advises us that, since we're not ADA compliant, since there's issues with Ms. Marien here, Ms. Gonzalez came and represented to the court, that one of her employees fell and almost broke their ankle going up the stairs. Oh, excuse me, two of them have fallen, and the liability that there is on the county for lack of having a, a elevator, the issues with the AC, the light switch is not working. Commissioner's court approved a order to not allow and close down the second floor to the public. Allowed Mr. Gonzalez and his staff to stay there, but to the public, it was not gonna be allowed. However, Judge Vascal refused to abide by that order and continued to, and continues to have court there. There's been many complaints, there's still complaints, and there's obviously a legal suit in place now in which us four, Commissioner Juan, myself, Commissioner Alonso, and Commissioner Urenda, who signed that order, we have a hearing before the administrative judge Abels in regards to that court order being in place, because essentially, our court order is the one that was in place, Judge Vascal filed an order to vacate our order.
There's no more offices available in the second or third?
There's offices of, there's off...
He's the only one in that office, in the second floor?
Yes.
Correct. In this floor?
No.
No.
The second?
No, there's not any on the second. In the third floor, there is, but Judge Flores has asked respectfully that we clear out those offices, because she needs them for her court, so we did clear out those offices, with the exception of one, but we cleared out the other offices, because she needed them for her court. We have, we sent Judge Vascal a letter advising him that he is more than welcome to use this first floor for court, and also the second floor, Judge Flores said she could, he could use her chambers and her court, however, he refused to do so, so...
Is there somewhere else we can put Mr. Gonzalez, so the elevator, like, is fixed, once Estela comes back?
Well, I'm hoping that the elevator will be fixed by the time Estela comes back, but I, I can't guarantee you or Mr. Gonzalez that... That, that's the only thing, is that... Correct, because we have to put...
There wouldn't be four, it may take a long time before, and the windows take a while.
Judge Maya?
Yes.
We have an air conditioning, or no, we, the courthouse has an air conditioner, it turns on by itself, and turns, turns on by itself. Even if the breakers off, it's feeding power from sambler, and that's the air conditioning that's been giving a lot of trouble with that smoke. So, he's been...
It's not even...
As best to my knowledge, Judge Vascal has been kept up to par with it, and, but I don't know, I can't speak for him, but that's my concern with the fire department got called, is because they still have strong orders.
And it wasn't even just for Mr. Gonzalez, it was also for Mr. Garcia and his staff that are being put at risk, because at the bottom, I mean, that's initially where the smoke smell was coming from too. And so, that entire courthouse, there's a lot of issues with it, and we have a really nice rental, I mean, brand new, if you will, Alex courthouse, and we've, we've advised that, Mr. Gonzalez has advised the judge, Mr. Carmona has advised the judge, we've all advised the judge, and they're continuing to do business there. And it's, it's, obviously, obviously, the second floor is an issue, because you gotta go with the elevator, but, I mean, I also think about Mr. Garcia's staff, I mean, if a fire goes out, it's not just gonna affect Mr. Gonzalez or the second floor, it's gonna come down. And so, those are issues that, that are had, being had in that, in that building. And we did the best that we could, I think, with the information we had, Ms. Marien came and testified before us, and we essentially closed off that second floor. Now, Judge Vascal took it upon himself to vacate our order, and now we're in that legal situation. But my concern as being the chief budget officer of this county is always looking at the finances and trying to be financially conservative, and it's costing us money and possibly liabilities, and Mr. Gonzalez and I discussed it, lawsuits, if somebody falls off those stairs, because there's still court going on.
Yeah, we, we have a problem also when we have court here, we have to haul our, haul our files... Yeah, we have a problem also when we have court here, we have to haul our files all the way over here, so with no elevator, so I either have to carry them down the stairs or we get Joseph to carry down the files or, you know, Estella's husband was coming in voluntarily and carrying down the files or when I wasn't available and then afterwards I have to carry them up one at a time up to there also, so we can get back into our office, so yeah.
And those air conditioners are twenty years old, life expectancy of an air conditioner is only ten years, especially if you get a But that's why we're having all these issues, and then, not only do they get air condition, but the heater turns on by itself and they have other I mean, we're trying everything we can, you know, and of course it takes a little bit of time to get everything done.
If I would call the fire department every day I smell smoke, you know, we'd be shut down completely.
Thank you. Claim docket, general fund, one million fifty-one thousand seven hundred and five dollars and ninety cents, Dimon County Airport, forty-three dollars fifty-nine cents, Dimon County Golf Course, seventeen thousand four hundred fifteen and fifty-five cents, law library fund, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars, courthouse security, three thousand one hundred eighteen and fifty-six cents, records management, two thousand five hundred fifty-five and thirty-two cents, utilities, eighty-eight thousand four hundred twenty-six and sixty-three cents, rodeo arena, fifty dollars, stone garden, fifty-five thousand one hundred thirty-four and seventy-six cents, Operation Lone Star, twenty-two twenty-two, seventy-five thousand eight hundred eighty-eight and sixty cents, Valley Wells Cemetery, one hundred eighty-three dollars and ninety-six cents, Dimon County Payroll, four hundred fifty-nine thousand eight hundred sixty-four and fifty-one cents, tax note series, twenty-two twenty-three, one hundred thirty-nine thousand seven hundred thirty-five, COs twenty-eighteen, one hundred thirty-five thousand three hundred ninety-five, COs twenty-twenty-one, nine thousand seven hundred, free grant total of two million thirty-nine thousand four hundred ninety-five and thirty-eight cents.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner, in that discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? We have one abstention, which is Commissioner Juan Carmona. I will entertain a motion to recess the regular You know, give me one second.
Mr. Garcia, how long can I leave the regular meeting open? If I don't ask for a motion to adjourn, because we might have to come back
Resess.
Resess.
To recess, how long can I recess?
Come back at a certain time.
No, but I mean, sometime during this week, because we need to do a proclamation for April's child abuse awareness.
Resess? Educate the day and the time.
I'm just going, I'll just, we'll set it on the next commissioner's court on the fifteenth. I didn't want to wait so long, but I'll just put it in submit for a special meeting. We'll adjourn, because I don't have an actual date right now. I have a motion to recess and adjourn by Commissioner Alonso Carmona and I have a second by Commissioner Rulcava, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. I have the time now being twelve thirty-seven, Mr. Garcia, and I'm going to call the public facilities meeting to order, roll call, let the record reflect that we have Commissioner Uredna, Commissioner Alonso Carmona, Commissioner Juan Carmona, Commissioner Rulcava and myself, the county judge, present. One point three, approval of meeting minutes of regular meeting, March eighteenth. Subject to any corrections by Commissioner Rulcava.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Commissioner Juan was not at the meeting, there is an abstention by Commissioner Juan. Two point one, discussion and appropriate action, new business, Commissioner Juan, is there any new business?
Yes, ma'am, for the information of the court, we started fixing Middle Rio with some of the funds from the public facilities, which we budgeted for that, we have started fixing the light bulbs in the ceiling tile and I don't know why those gentlemen are said to put the lights on the walls, you know, the square ones that they have there at the border patrol station, since those lights that we installed on the poles, they light everything, but they told me that they wanted them done before there were these issues, so I said, okay, well, it's going to be quite a bit of money just to get those fixtures replaced. So, I don't know if
That's for the border, that's for the border patrol station?
Yes, ma'am, I don't know if we need, if the court would like to go and see what I'm talking about
We can do that.
To me, it's a waste of money since all the lights on the poles are working and you can see everything, but they want them on.
Any other new business? Any discussion? I entertain a motion for
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Uredna, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rulcava. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Three point one, claim docket, we have the public facility, public safety, excuse me, thirteen thousand nine hundred nineteen and fifty-six cents. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Rulcava. Discussion?
Are you willing to label all the stuff we do with the Middle Rio? Because it's coming out of the two hundred valve?
Right, but that's
But it's not going to the border, because it's going out to the
It's just for my item, sure.
But I add up just, see fully then, okay, thank you.
I entertain a motion to recess and adjourn. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rulcava. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, this meeting has ended.